We start with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, civil, liberty, and justice for all.
The mission statement for the Police Oversight Board is advancing constitutional policing and accountability for APD and the Albuquerque community. Can I get an approval of the tonight's agenda?
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda to introduce the public comment with some remarks before the public comment begins so that we can set the stage for public comment.
So general public comment or public comment on 252?
There's two. Can I ask? There's two public comments. One is general and the other one is public comments for...
There's only one public comments on the public agenda.
Chair, Chair Waits, there's a, there's a mix up. You have the correct agenda, which was the one that was post, that was posted, and I think that inadvertently you got what, what is being distributed was the old agenda.
Okay. So there's, there's two problems. Okay. So with that being said, we will, we would have your introductory to our, what we're trying to establish tonight. Okay. So again, can I get an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda. My second.
So in motion and second, that we approved the, the tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. I will start with general public comments. These comments are not pertaining to, to the public comments of use of force. If there's anyone that has public comments, this is just a general public comment. Okay? Good evening, Mr. Larson.
Good evening, Chair Waits, members of the board. Nice to see you again. My comments are not on the content of 252. I'm not sure how to turn this on over here. I have this and I know they set it up for me. My comments are related to why we're having this meeting tonight. And as, as I have here in this, you can see the, the SOP 352 that you all worked diligently to try to get it through. So we had a policy on policies with APD on how this process would work. And then we come, we come up with this 252 and we don't follow that policy. And it, the, the purpose of that policy was saying that the transparent, structured, and informed development of departmental policies and standard operating procedures is a crucial part of meeting the department's mission to provide effective and constitutional policing to the community. On June 24th, on June 14th, the draft OPA minutes from, I think, June 6th were discussed. On July 12th, the, oh, no, on July 10th, the PPRB approved the 252 minutes. On July 12th, there was a POB meeting and the subcommittee report. I think Dr. Cass said the, gave an overview of the involvement with the use of force process and says he had been attending monthly meetings. There was no mention of the July 10th PPRB approval at the July 12th meeting. On July 19th, the POB Policy and Procedures Subcommittee minutes reflected the Graham changes to the PPRB approval of 252 were not mentioned, nor was the PPRB approval. On August 16th, the POB PNP Subcommittee met and discovered that the monitor shared grave concerns about the Graham changes to the PPRB final version, which leads us to tonight's hurried meeting to discuss this and leaves me as a citizen wondering what the status is because if this, if, if the POB was ever given a copy of that draft, then the 30 days, assuming it was given on July 10th, or around that time, the 30 days for the POB review has expired according to the policies and procedures that were approved with which the POB had a significant role. And so now we're waiting for trying to rush through to get, meet a September 21st court deadline. So I'm hoping that some of these questions will be answered and I'll leave with the fact that on the, I don't know, but on the July 10th PPRB meeting, the CPOA Director and a member of the POB are voting members of the PPRB. And the subsequent minutes that I've been able to find don't suggest that it was ever brought up until August 16th. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any comments or questions?
Chair Waits, I'm wondering if we can have the, the chart attached to our record of this meeting, the chart that Mr. Larson has prepared?
If that's what Mr. Larson wants.
Was it, I don't have it in my...
We do have a copy of that. You should have, but if not, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you. My comments are on a completely different topic, have nothing to do with the major things you're going to be speaking about tonight. What I want to talk about is how this board treats civilians and how the department treats civilians when it comes to bringing complaints. I wonder, I can't find it. I'm looking at the wrong page. On July 31st, 2017, I filed a complaint concerning how a police officer mislabeled evidence, which caused it to be destroyed, and a, the district attorney had to dismiss a DWI case. On April 10th, that case came to the Subcommittee, your Case Review Subcommittee, and the officer, the, Mr. Harness found that the officer didn't do, did indeed mess up and the finding was sustained. And at that April 10th meeting, the Subcommittee told Mr. Harness to include the form for the recommendation of discipline that would go to the chief, to include that form to me, to mail it to me. And two days later, the full board voted on the, the case and made the same demand to Mr. Harness that he mail that recommendation of discipline to me. That never happened. So that was a violation of your policy twice. And then your policy also says that cases that are decided by the board are to be sent out the next business day. That did not happen. The case was mailed out to me on the 30th of April, which is, what, 18 days later. So that's a violation of your policy by Mr. Harness. Then on June 19th, I sent an IPRA request to the Chairman, Mr. Waits. To the, to this day, that request has been, gone unanswered. That is a violation of state law. Let me back up just one more, one minute. On the, the April 30th letter, of course, triggered a 20-day response from the chief to me saying that he agreed with the discipline that was recommended, which to this day I still don't know what is. That letter was never sent to me. So the chief is in violation of the ordinance, which is a violation of the law.
Okay, can you wrap it up?
I'm not finished. I, I'd really like to...
You got 30 seconds.
If you might.
I'll give you 30 seconds.
Okay, all right. On August 7th, I've sent an email to Vice Chair Galloway asking why I have received no response to this IPRA request from the Chairman. On August 17th, she responded very, I appreciate that very much. And on August 17th, I received an email from Mr. Harness, who is supposedly your records custodian, telling me that he had just found my request from June 19th and that he did not identify himself as the records custodian for the Police Oversight Board, which I believe is a violation of IPRA. And he said that he does not have those records written by his own hand that are supposed to be retained in his office.
Okay, Mr. Harrison.
So here we are, a year, over a year later, and I still don't know what's going on.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Before we move to public comments, Ms., would you go ahead and do your 10-minute presentation?
I'd like to provide some background for this special meeting of the POB. At the last POB meeting on August 9th, the community groups expressed concerns about the most recent revisions of SOP 252, which is why we're here tonight. The first policy to progress through the APD Policy and Procedures Review Board was this, was SOP 252. In an open meeting on August 16th, the Policy Subcommittee of this, of the POB met to discuss further actions on this SOP. We had also observed that there were several changes to the SOP that made it significantly different than it had been discussed earlier at DOJ and OPA meetings, Office of Policy Analysis of APD. And the APD Policy on Policies, which is SOP 352, and these have all been alluded to, I think, in public comment, but this Policy on Policy defines a process that should be followed, that allows for public comment, and finishes policy reviews in a timely manner. And that policy is intended to furnish a near-final draft to the, of the policy when it emerges from the Policy and Procedures Review Board, which is another board of APD. This policy, this policy and this procedure was not exactly followed, and we agreed that the public should be given another chance to comment in an open POB meeting. So at that Policy Subcommittee meeting, Commander Michelle Campbell and APD employee Jolene Luna, who are a large part of the policy development process and, and review at APD, were observers of that meeting, and so they were aware of what we were doing as well. So I'm just trying to give a little bit of context for why we are here at this meeting today. APD has been rewriting the use of force suite of policies under a court deadline to finish the rewrite process by September 21st, and SOP is, 252 is the first and the most important part of policy in this series. It affects the other policies in the suite, especially through mention of the Graham standard for use of force. This was something that had been put in and out and debated significantly, and I'm sure we're going to hear more about that tonight. So these, this policy then in turn affects the training that is needed to implement the policies in the field and then improve the use of force investigations and reporting to be more effective and less time-consuming for APD supervisors. This is another issue that's been discussed significantly recently as an impediment to APD being able to function as they'd like to function. So this is, it's in the suite that's being proposed. So with that, I'd like to briefly review the other use of force policies that are in this suite, that are included, so that we can get a better idea of how they fit together. And this will take a few minutes, but I think we're all interested in getting the best result that we can. I'd like to point out that the basic structure of the policies includes a statement of purpose and a statement of policy. Much intention has been paid by APD to improve the structure and the language so that these policies are more understandable and trainable. So first of all, the use of force policy. What I plan to do is read the purpose. The purpose of the general use of force policy, which is known as SOP 252, is to describe the processes, the procedures, requirements, and expectations surrounding the use of force by all personnel of the APD Department. The policy itself says, "Officers shall make every effort to preserve human life in all situations. The department shall hold officers accountable for upholding lawful, professional, and ethical standards through assertive leadership and supervision before, during, and after every use of force incident. Officers who use force shall use the minimum amount of force that is reasonable, necessary, and proportional based on the totality of the circumstances confronting the officers in order to bring about a lawful objective." There are several more paragraphs that deal with the policy of this, but I'll leave those out. They're, they're easily available, and I'm sure you've read many of them. The second policy in the suite is SOP 253, and it's the definitions. And the purpose is to define the terminology used by APD use of force policies. And I think this is a, this, the terms that are defined here are, include things as, you know, the fundamental concepts that we're talking about, force, de-escalation, feasible, imminent threat, lethal force, levels of force, levels of resistance, minimum force, neck hold, reportable force, serious physical injury. And, and so I think it's good that we have a set of terms that are all defined in one place and that pertain to all of these policies. The third policy is SOP 254, and it's called intermediate weapon systems. The purpose is to identify the intermediate weapon systems utilized by officers of APD and establish directives for officers in the use and deployment of those intermediate weapons. Intermediate weapons are less lethal options available to officers executing lawful objectives which are designed to produce pain and incapacitating effects. Intermediate weapons are intended to overcome resistance or stop the threatening actions of an individual and/or control a situation without causing death or physical injury. There's a little bit more, but I'll go on. 255 is the use of force de-escalation policy. And this was, by the way, this was PPRB approved, Policy and Procedures Review Board, on August 10th. The previous one, the intermediate weapons policy, was approved by the Policy and Procedures Review Board on, also on August 10th. So the use of force de-escalation, the purpose is to establish guidelines for officers of APD regarding using de-escalation techniques during interactions with individuals in an effort to avoid unnecessarily escalating a situation, to gain voluntary compliance from an uncooperative individual, and to reduce or eliminate the use of force. The policy states that officers shall use de-escalation techniques when feasible. Policing at times requires an officer to exercise control of a violent or resistant individual or an individual experiencing a mental health or behavioral crisis. At other times, policing may require an officer to serve as a mediator between parties or diffuse a tense situation. 256 is the next, SOP 256 is the next policy, and it has to do with use of force reporting by departmental personnel. The purpose is to set forth the responsibilities of all department personality, personnel to report use of force against an individual, whether an officer is a witness to a use of force or involved in the use of force, so that reviewers and investigators can determine whether such force was reasonable, necessary, and proportional based on the totality of the circumstances confronting the officer. The policy states that the department shall hold officers accountable for the immediate reporting of use of force in order to facilitate the review and investigation of such incidents. The department shall require officers witnessing or learning about use of force by another officer to completely, thoroughly, and accurately report such incidents to the appropriate supervisor. And the last policy of the suite is called use of force review and investigation by department personnel. And the purpose is to objectively and thoroughly review every use of force and show of force by officers to reach a finding supported by the evidence concerning whether the officer used the minimum amount of force that was reasonable, necessary, and proportional based upon the totality of the circumstances to bring about a lawful objective. The categories or types of force shall be based on the level of force used and the risk of injury or actual injury from the use of force. The goal is to improve efficiency and reduce the burden on first-line supervisors while optimizing critical investigation resources on higher-risk uses of force. The policy states that supervisors and force investigation section officers shall conduct timely, thorough, and accurate reviews and investigations by use of force by department personnel. Supervisors and officers reviewing and investigating use of force shall assess whether the officer utilized the minimum amount of force that was reasonable, necessary, and proportional based on totality of the circumstances confronting the officers in order to bring about a lawful objective. So this constitutes the complete use of force suite, which is currently under development at APD. The review is not intended to open the discussion to all these policies, but if you choose to comment on any or all of these policies, I'd say you're prerogative. I think it is reasonable to expect some questions that are raised on 2, in 252 may be answered in these following policies, and the community should be aware of all of the policies. One last comment, since these are new policies, they are subject to a six-month review after their approval. At that time, however, training to these policies will be in process, and we will invite APD back to give us an update in what they've learned from that, from the process at that point in time. So with that introduction, I'd like to open the floor to public comment for this.
So with that introduction, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. I'm, I'm giving, everyone has three minutes, and we need to hold you to that because we need to proceed with our agenda tonight. So I'm going to call out three names, and with those three people come up, and I'll follow with the other three. Robbie Heckman, Judith Minks, and Rachel Smith. Please do.
Thank you, Chair Waits, board members. My name is Robbie Heckman, and I represent La Mesa Presbyterian Church on the APD Forward Coalition. I'm here tonight to voice APD Forward's opposition to having the Graham language in the APD use of force 252 policy and, and especially the whole suite writ large. APD Forward's made clear in our previous remarks to this body, at CPC meetings, other public meetings, as well as our written comments we've provided and submitted on each of the SOPs moving through the policy development process. Graham is the minimal legal standard, and the court-approved settlement agreement requires a standard much higher. We're concerned that putting the Graham language in the policy will result in confusion and impact the training curriculum and the operationalization of the use of force at APD, especially the use of force investigatory standards. Case in point, in attending public meetings where APD officers and commanders have presented the use of force policy, they have stated that Graham is a best practice and will ensure that officers who use force will be evaluated on what is objectively reasonable and not 20-20 hindsight. It's just really important to point out in this context that Graham looks backwards. Graham is not a practice. Graham doesn't consider what force array was available, whether de-escalation techniques were used. It takes you to the superseding moment, which actually erases the totality of the circumstances, ironically, and asks questions such as, what did the officer perceive? What was the officer feeling, which are, I submit to you, highly subjective standards and not objective standards. So I think the absence of Graham in the policy will not result in Graham not being applied as a minimum legal standard. It is the minimum legal standard across the country, and the absence of it in the policy will not result in it not being applied to APD officers who are being criminally or administratively, or, excuse me, criminally or civilly charged. So I think that's important to point out. And I think also it's important to point out that the SOP are, are critical because they're the basis of the curriculum, and the monitor has admonished APD over and over and over again that they need to have their policies be directive, concise, and they need to inform the curriculum, and that's the way that they get from the policy to the appropriate training and the operational compliance part of this. So it's, it's a critically important thing. I think it interjects unnecessary confusion and will impact the training. And with that, I'll, I'll conclude.
Thank you, Mr. Heckman. Judith Minks?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I'm Judith Minks. I'm a civilian who has been attending the Foothills Community Police and Council since December of 2014. And as a result of attending those meetings, I just have a paragraph that I'd like to insert into the record. You've got a use of force draft approved July 10th of 2018, which is firmly rooted in best practices from other law enforcement agencies. The significance of best practices should not be minimized. The policy of best practices means that the law enforcement agency has had the continued benefit of review, legal review over and over, and continued training over and over. So best practices agencies, you have instructional materials that are already developed, you have instructors that are already available to do a train-the-trainers course, you have resources available for constitutional policing. Graham is settled law, but it also is rooted in the broken windows theory of community policing of the 80s and the 90s. Albuquerque deserves a constitutional policing policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Smith?
Good evening, Chair Waits and members of the board. My name is Rachel Smith. I'm representing Albuquerque Healthcare for the Homeless as part of APD Forward, and I want to thank everyone for being here tonight to consider this extremely important policy. I do believe that everyone here really wants APD officers trained to the highest standards rooted in best practice, and Policy 252, as it's currently written, does not meet that standard. And we're concerned that this, we will continue to see unnecessary and excessive uses of force. We're also concerned that the current draft is watered down in a way that makes it confusing and less likely to prevent excessive use of force. We know that we all don't want a use of force policy that gives justification for use of force. We all want a policy that shows an officer only use force as a last resort because no other options were available. And insertion of the Graham standard makes this hard to do as it is currently written. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Torres, Renetta Torres, and Alan Wegman.
Good afternoon, Chairman Waits. To be polite, I would ask to defer, and let ladies go first, if their wife can go first.
Appreciate that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Renetta Torres, and I too would like to just briefly address this body to talk about the use of force section of the policy. It is critically important, I think, for our city, and we all want effective policing in our community. We all want to know that we are served and protected in the very best manner possible. So with that, I think that the language of the use of force policy is absolutely critical, that it be clear, that it be directive, that there be no gray areas. I think that if you look, if you take a careful review of the last 10 years of use of force by the Albuquerque Police Department, you will see instances, if you read the details of these situations, if you read the details... of these situations, if you read the details of the use of tasers, of the use of guns as they shoot and in many instances fatally shoot members of our community, I think those details will clearly demonstrate an excessive use of force. And any reasonable individual would be shocked and horrified as you read the details of these various shootings, tasing incidents that have occurred in our city. So I would urge, strongly urge, this committee and the City of Albuquerque to carefully and with thoughtful consideration examine the language of the use of force as it applies to ongoing training of the police force in our community. As you know, the Department of Justice launched a comprehensive investigation into the Albuquerque Police Department, and it was for data that they collected over a span of many, many years. So I think that the data clearly illustrates that we had a problem. We would like to move to an era where that is not the case, and I think we need to do it as a community and together. But again, I urge you to carefully consider the language in 252.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Waits, members of the Police Oversight Board, honorable judges.
This issue surrounding use of force is a tremendous concern to me and my family. I am also a member of APD Forward, and I support the statements made by the two individuals who spoke previously, but I'm also a concerned citizen and an affected family member. Some of you may remember that our son, Christopher, was a tragic victim of APD's culture of aggression and excessive use of force eight years ago, more or less. This isn't just me saying this, these aren't my words. This is what Judge Shannon Bacon said in her decision after our lawsuit against APD and the city. Judge Bacon ruled that the two officers involved in Christopher's death had violated several established standard operating procedures when they confronted our son. And yet, at the trial, the city's attorneys were arguing that the use of force utilized by these two officers was justified in my son's case. This is why it's critical to specify and nail down minimum use of force, so that there is no gray area, no officer's discretion in light of the totality of the circumstances or situation. Minimum has to mean minimum, whether the individual being confronted is male or female, white, minority, mentally ill, disabled, homeless, or otherwise. There should not be any wiggle room whatsoever for an officer to claim that, well, I feared for my safety because the suspect was mentally ill, Hispanic young man, or whatever the situation may be. The same standard has to apply throughout, and it has to be minimum standard. It's critical that the use-of-force policy being considered, number 252, has to be crystal clear without any ambiguity and rooted in best practices so as to avoid needless future tragedies. I want to conclude by thanking all of you for the hard work you've been doing all of this time. It's appreciated, not just by me, but by the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. The city attorney, I'm sorry.
One more, Alan Wegman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alan, my friend.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I submitted written comments to you, some of them—
Alan, can you speak into the mic, please?
I have submitted written comments to you, some of them you've seen before. I'll just emphasize some that I think are most important. The policies as written do talk about de-escalation, but you have to look, you have to go down and read through them. An officer reading the policies is going to be impressed by what he or she sees first and most often. If de-escalation is buried, the message is strong. De-escalation is not necessary. It's minor. It doesn't count. Think about the James Boyd video. Clearly, officers de-escalated, then they re-escalated, then they created a situation where he pulled out knives again, then they rushed him, then they sent the dog up, then they sent an officer after the dog, and that justified murdering him. And I use the word advisedly, intentionally. The, I suggested language regarding Graham v. Connor taking that language completely, the reference to the case completely out of, out of the policies because Supreme Court cases change. New Mexico Supreme Courts and appellate courts also govern. Just make sure that officers follow whatever is more stringent, the policies that Albuquerque decides, or the policies of the courts, and we should be more stringent than the courts. There's specific language that the severity of the crime is a factor in determining whether use of force is reasonable. I know that straight from Graham v. Connor. The point I want to make about that, and I've made it before you before, is there are people who commit murder who are not dangerous. A family member who shoots another family member in a moment of distress or anger is not going to kill somebody else. There are people who have committed misdemeanor domestic violence who are very dangerous. The severity of the crime has nothing to do with the danger, it should not be a factor, but it's in Graham v. Connor. And it's in Graham v. Connor because, other than Thurgood Marshall and Sonia Sotomayor, I don't think there is a single justice who's been on the Supreme Court then or since who has ever had direct experience with police. If you base this policy on a decision made by people who don't know anything at all about what it's like to be in the street, you will get Albuquerque policing pre-2013. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wegman.
We have final comment from the city attorney. Aguilar?
Can we address the speaker?
It's Alan.
That's okay.
Chair Waits, members of the board, may I proceed?
Sure.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Stevon Aguilar, Steve Aguilar, this is Albuquerque City Attorney. As Mr. Schmeele explained at the August 9th, 2018 CPOA or POB meeting, we must work together, and we need your help. As you know, this body plays a critical role to foster mutual trust and cooperation between the Albuquerque Police Department and our community. In the approximately six months that I have been on the job, I have seen firsthand the tremendous progress that APD has made at every level to transform this department. Under Mayor Keller's leadership, the city has strived to work closely with the U.S. Attorney's Office and all of our community partners to raise the level of transparency about the steps the Albuquerque Police Department takes during this process, as well as opening a constructive dialogue with all of our partners in the community on critical areas of concern like the use-of-force policy, which is before the board tonight. Similarly, the city must also have a productive and professional working relationship with the POB to address any concerns the board has in a productive and a professional manner. Under this administration, the city and my office have made a concerted effort to ensure that the POB is kept fully informed as the transformation process continues to move forward. Inclusion of the POB in the policy development process is one example of this effort and one that has taken months to complete. I am sensitive to the fact that under the previous administration, this was not always the case. However, it is a new day, and it's critically important, particularly at this stage, that we move forward together. We have a long way to go in order to reach and sustain compliance with all of the provisions of the CASA. So I want to echo what Mr. Schmeele asked the board earlier this month to assist us and work closely with us moving forward. As my colleague explained, the parties are under tight deadlines, particularly with the use-of-force policy progress, and it does not serve anybody's interests, the POB, the Albuquerque Police Department, and certainly not members of our community, to begin that dialogue at the 11th hour or make comments or take other actions that lead the public to believe that the POB was not involved in this process. I am again asking for your help to work closely with our team moving forward so we have the opportunity to address any and all concerns the board has, whether it's with this process or any of the board's responsibilities, in a constructive and timely way. The Garcia investigation is just one example. Despite the narrative that seems to have gotten away from everyone, there was never any effort to interfere in any way with your important responsibility to the community. I spoke with Director Harness earlier this week and explained that the third-party investigative file was mistakenly withheld and will be produced. Had Director Harness or any member of the board reached out to Mr. Schmeele or myself, we would immediately resolve this issue. We are one Albuquerque, and we have to work together, the POB included, to resolve these types of issues moving forward for the good of our community to achieve our shared goal of constitutional, community-based policing. Tonight, we are here to listen to your final comments addressing your concerns regarding the Graham standards and the use-of-force policy, a responsibility that we take very seriously. We will carefully consider what we hear tonight as we finalize the use-of-force policy, which we have done throughout this long process. But again, I ask, moving forward, that if you have any concerns, to please reach out to myself or to Mr. Schmeele. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. Does anyone on the board have any comments or questions? Sure. Please.
I'm not sure if this question is for you, but it certainly needs to be asked of the difference between the OPA version of this 252 and the PPRB version, which is where Graham versus Connor was added back in. In our meeting where we went over the Use-of-Force Policy 252, we were especially vocal about Graham versus Connor not being in it. Ms. Van de Vender spoke eloquently about the feelings that she, and I think she spoke for the board, when she said that the union's feedback on this, to put Graham versus Connor back in, to put Graham versus Connor back in would be counter to what the presentation we got from the commander. The commander talked in particular about Graham versus Connor and why it wasn't put in, and then Ms. Van de Vender spoke very eloquently about how we were so glad that that was not the case. So you can imagine, when we see this with Graham versus Connor back in this policy now, it feels like the whole conversation we had was circumvented. It may be that there's a reason for putting it back in, heaven knows, I don't know what it is, and I would like somebody to tell me how we got from the meeting that it wasn't in the policy to the meeting that it is. And in particular, the commander who spoke to us talked about being directive to the police officers and not confusing. And in my read of this PPRB draft, it has Graham versus Connor and de-escalation, and those two things, I think the commander was right to say they don't belong together, and I think it adds confusion. I agree with some of the speakers who spoke earlier. I want to understand how this got changed to include this thing we all agreed ahead of time, with the exception of the union, that would not be in there. So how did we get to this place?
Chair Waits?
Please.
Member Fine, I will defer to Mr. Schmeele for the specific details about that conversation. Obviously, I was not privy to the board's decision regarding the Graham standards and being included in the policy before the PPRB meeting, but certainly Director Cass and, I'm sorry, Dr. Cass and Director Harness were at that meeting when those specific changes were discussed, I believe it was on July 10th, 2018. My understanding is also that both Dr. Cass and Director Harness voted for that version that went through. As for how it got from one, from being out to inside the policy, I'll defer to Mr. Schmeele to answer those specific questions, which I think have been previously addressed before, but I will defer to him again.
Not to my satisfaction. I need more information.
Chair Waits and board members, good evening. So the June OPA meeting, which took place here at the Police Oversight Board, had that draft there, and there was discussion, there was considerable discussion, and Ms. Van de Vender read her comment. Now, after that, and I think that it's really important to keep this within the context of policy development, and this is a draft. And when you look at 352, you have the Office of Policy Analysis, and that was the first time it was ever held in public, and those comments were gathered. Then what took place after that was, as 352 stipulates, the Power DMS, it was posted to Power DMS, which is that internal document-sharing software, and then comments were received by sworn personnel. And then on top of that, the Chief of Police and Commander Middleton went to the academy and had several meetings with sworn personnel, talking to them about the policy, so they gathered their input. And then what happened was, a draft was prepared based upon all of the comments, the ones gathered from the Office of Policy Analysis, and the ones gathered from sworn personnel, and any other ones that may have been submitted online. I don't think any were, but I don't know for sure. Then, the PPRB draft was prepared by myself and Commander Middleton, in discussion also with Officer Nico from the academy, because he has involvement in use-of-force training. And on July 10th, as Mr. Aguilar stated, we had the PPRB meeting. And on top of that, I think it's really crucial to say that that PPRB draft was sent, and I'm always working under the impression that these are sent to the POB as a board. And I say this because that's an assumption, and when we had discussions about, and I think it's really even more important to think about it as, these are drafts, and the ultimate decision about what goes into the final policy is the PPRB, the department and the city. And so, as far as the reason why it was inserted back in, I certainly can defer, and I won't defer again, but to Commander Middleton, he has the benefit of all those conversations. He is sworn personnel, he is an officer with over 20 years' experience, I think it's 20 years' experience in the department. Because we hear a lot of talk from the courtroom and Graham, we hear a lot of talk from all of these different perspectives, but who is the audience for this policy? It is an officer. And so, I think my point fundamentally is that this, what you saw was a draft. And then because POB has voting membership to, POB and CPO has voting membership there, the assumption again always is that this is a conversation. I think Mr. Larson pointed out that there are actually meetings as well, on the 12th, I think it was, on the 19th. And so, I guess my confusion comes in this being a shock in two ways. One, that this is a draft working its way through the process, and two, that it changed, especially for the Police Oversight Board, because it was received. At least it was sent. And two members from the body appeared, and no objection to the language was made. So certainly Ms. Van de Vender read her statement back in June, but as this is a policy development process over time, and this draft is being edited over time, that has to be a consideration. So if I can, I'd like to call up Commander Middleton because—
Please.
—he put in an immense amount of work gathering comments and everything, and I think he can add his perspective.
I'm glad he's here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good evening. I was, had to put my laptop down, I'm taking notes with all the comments, so. You can ask me something specific, I'm not sure exactly what you want to know, or if you want to give perspective.
Well, it was my understanding when you made the presentation to us, I understood you to say, as we discussed Graham versus Connor, and how glad we were that, for A, we were having a meeting and the public was welcome to come, and we got to hear it all together, and we were very complimentary, as I recall.
Right.
And rightfully so. And I remember in your— were having a meeting and the public was welcome to come, and we got to hear it all together, and we were very complimentary, as I recall.
Right.
And rightfully so. And I remember in your comments, you said, you mentioned the Graham versus Connor and that it's not in there. Then Ms. Van de Venter talked about the union response, which we had all gotten copies of,
Right.
Which talked about it has to go, it has to go back to that. And we, she objected, and I certainly agreed with her. So to my way of thinking, you were making a strong case that we be clear, that we not add confusion into this, that the officer's going to take this as the most important directives, and that muddying the waters is not useful. And so, and as I recall, you were saying that you were glad that Graham versus Connor wasn't in there. And so, as were we all, so now it's back in. I didn't expect, nor did anybody expect, it was going to stay exactly the same, but this is a substantive difference, to have Graham versus Connor back in there. This isn't just, oh, well, this is like the biggest change there could be, and it's very dramatic, this being the most important policy affecting the Department of Justice's concerns and the community's concerns. This is no small matter, that Graham versus Connor is back in here, and I'd like to know why it's back in there. How does it
Sure.
Benefit the community to have Graham versus Connor back in this, and how did you get to that place?
Okay, so after that meeting, and after we had that discussion, and the explanation, that was the first presentation to the P O B and to the public. And throughout this entire process, we're gathering comments from everybody. So as policy writers, Officer Nico, me, and Jeremy Schmeele, writing this policy, it's not coming from one source, and from the beginning, I told you, it's a collaborative effort, and we're getting comments from everybody, to include all, whatever the number is, 850 sworn police officers, because they have that invested interest in this policy as well. And when you said that, so if you look at our current policy, what we're operating under right now, Graham is written in there everywhere, it's strewn throughout the entire policy. And it's terrible, that, the way that's written is terrible, and I think it's confusing, and I'm, like Jeremy Schmeele said, I've been on for 21 years, in the field for 17 years, you know, I've been involved in multiple instances of uses of force, I've been a victim of batteries, things like that, you know, being a police officer. And the policy that we have right now, not the one that we're writing, but the one that we're operating under, it is confusing, and I explained that, and I'll say it here again, it is confusing. But to open up this new policy, so when I presented this with the Chief of Police to the forums at the Albuquerque Police Academy, we invited every police officer to come and give their comments, and that's, you know, it's centered around a lot of things, it's centered around, why are we looking at other police, why are we looking to other police departments? And we answered a lot of those questions, these are kind of like the softball things, so, you know, we explained that we looked at Cleveland, Baltimore, Seattle, we looked at, we looked at New Orleans, we looked at the Los Angeles Police Department, and those were the answers, those are the explanations we can give police officers to say why we have reasonable, necessary, and proportional, that's following a track of best practices for other police departments. And then it came back to, it would always come back to Graham. But, so, we were able to clear up the language and the reasons that we added all of that language and changed it, and I, what I think is dramatically from the current policy to this future policy that we're doing. And the biggest thing is, and what I think all of us have agreed upon, is Graham doesn't need to be throughout the entire thing. When we talk about reasonable, necessary, and proportional, those are the key words that matter. We don't talk about objectively reasonable, necessary, and proportional, it's reasonable, necessary, and proportional, while considering de-escalation techniques and considering the minimum amount of force. So that's the more strict language that we have in the policy, but to open the policy, the officers felt that having the Graham language in the opening part of the policy, and then bookending it by having it in the closing part of the policy, to say, this is how we are going to evaluate what an objectively reasonable police officer would do, to put it in the front and the back end, is what they wanted. And I'm not going to say no to you, or to them, or anybody else, we're trying to incorporate that language into our policy, whatever, with everybody's comments. But, so having, so having said that, when an investigator goes out, whether it's a first-line supervisor on a Level 1 use of force, or the Internal Affairs Force Division on all Level 2s and 3 uses of force, they will ask that police officer, tell me what you did, tell me what you saw, what did you consider, what kind of crime was it, what was the severity, the immediacy, and the level of threat, or level of resistance. All of the weight is not going into that one statement, that's not all of the weight, and that's the Graham standard, that's the Graham weight that we were, that we have always considered, from 1989 to present. It's something recognizable, it's something understandable to police officers, and that's why they wanted it bookended with that, but now we have all this other weight that we're putting on the other side. Now tell me what force, and I'll explain a few of them, so tell me what force options you considered. And if the officer says, well, wait a minute, I'm just used to you asking me questions about what was my perception, what did I see at the time, what were the totality of the circumstances, and we're going to tell them, not anymore, you tell me what force options you considered. And if they say, well, I didn't, I just considered shooting him with the taser, then they didn't meet the reasonable, necessary, and proportional, and minimum standard. So that's the more restrictive part of this. And when we ask them, tell me about your force array, and if the answer is, I didn't think about a force array, and then we tell them, tell me about the time, distance, cover, intermediate barriers, tell me about your de-escalation techniques used, what did you consider in engaging in conversation with this person first, from a safe distance, before walking him right to the scene? And, you know, under the Graham standard, if they said, well, I didn't, because he, I thought he was an imminent threat, and that's why I ran up to him, it's like, well, in this policy, we have not only imminent, but we also have immediate threat. If there's an immediate threat, I can understand that, but not an imminent threat. Why didn't you? And we'll ask those questions, and that's all the weight on the other side that's more restrictive in this policy. I, oh, go ahead.
Tell me how adding Connor in there, as some, I think Mr. Wegman said, that it's not like that's going away, I mean, that standard is out there.
Right.
So tell me how adding that language into the policy makes it clearer, makes it anything other than more comforting
Okay.
To the police officers.
I wrote a couple of things down, just taking some notes. It makes it clear, because of the directive we have been given from day one with the settlement agreement, and a few of the things I wrote down is, from the settlement agreement, the direction that we're getting, and what the officers have read in the settlement agreement, it says, "This agreement is not intended to limit the lawful authority of A P D officers to use objectively reasonable force, or otherwise to fulfill their law enforcement obligations under the Constitution and the laws of the United States." So objectively reasonable is Graham language. One of the other things in the settlement agreement, it says, "To maintain a high level of quality service to ensure officer safety and accountability, and to promote constitutional and effective policing, A P D shall revise and implement force policies, training, and accountability systems, to ensure that force is used in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the United States." This is one of them, I mean, there's several decisions, there's Tennessee v. Garner Graham, Tennessee v. Garner Graham v. Connor, there's other constitutional decisions that have been made, but adding this one at the beginning tells officers in the review process what some of the considerations we will be taking in interviewing that officer, to decide if it's in policy or out of policy use of force.
I'm sure everybody here has questions for you.
Yeah, sure, I'll take them all.
I don't necessarily have a question for you, but I do want to address a point you made, Mr. Aguilar, about working collaboratively together, and we're making that request of this board. And I just want to point out that I think that this is a, an exceptional meeting that we're having. I don't anticipate that for the remaining CASA agreements outside of this, CASA-related policies outside of this use of force suite, that we will have this problem. And I say that simply because of the flow of 352. When it gets to this board, we should have that near-finalized version of it, instead of running into a post-P P R B version of the same document that we feel as though is vastly different, or some of us, I won't speak for everybody, but some of us feel as though it's vastly different. So I don't think that you need to worry about working together. We had this rushed board meeting to address a public comment earlier, just so that we could enable this discussion while meeting that September 21 deadline. So this is our effort to, again, cooperate and make things happen on the same timeframe, so.
We appreciate that, and Chair Waits and Member Galloway, we appreciate that. But again, moving forward, as, whatever concerns you have, please reach out directly to me so we can address them, you know, not on the eve of the deadline. And I understand, I understand the considerations on this, on this policy, but moving forward, we really want to develop that good working relationship with the board, I mean, we all have the same interests and the same goals, and so that's, you know, we're here, obviously, we're here to hear all of the comments, and again, to carefully consider all of the concerns, and to address those in the final version. And again, as Dr. Cassett said, it's, we have a six-month review process, so we'll be able to know and revisit this at the end, as well as we're going through it, because it is a work in progress, and we want to, we want to be able to address any problems or concerns that come up, but we have to get rolling.
I agree, and I think that even just the relationship dynamics at play too are a work in progress, we're all trying to figure this thing out together. So I think that, at least on my part, you have my commitment to approach you.
Thank you, anytime.
Thanks.
I just wanted, I'll have some comments when we move into the P O B discussion agenda item, which we haven't done yet, however, I would like to ask Mr. Aguilar if he would stay for our further agenda items, because you did make some comments about agenda items that are coming up, and I wanted to reserve any conversation about those things until the appropriate time and place. Will you still be here?
I'll be here for the whole meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, let's move into our discussion of 2-52, policy 2-52. We'll start with Ms. Fine, any other comments on 2-52, other than?
Well, I don't feel there's been a satisfactory answer to why this was changed, other than to make the police officers feel more comfortable, I'm not sure if that really is a majority of actual police officers, or if that's just the union. And we've run into problems with this before, the union contract that the city has with, the contract the city has with the union, has restricted us in terms of the number of days we get to view things and stuff, so it matters what that union relationship is, and if there's a legitimate reason for officers, other than to be more, it's more familiar, I still don't know what that is. It sounds more confusing to me, reading it, maybe it's not to them, but I don't see it. And that's what worries me about adding it in. And in terms of the cooperation, I don't think we've been anything but cooperative for quite a long time. And I would say that this meeting was called because our next meeting was September the 12th, or 13th, whatever day that was, and that was too close to 21st. So it was really important that we try to get the public to have a voice in this now, while the conversation can still be healthy and productive. And so, I, that's all I have to say, I just, I still don't have an answer to why it's in here, other than it made the police officers feel more comfortable. And change is hard for everybody, and, you know, I don't see how it makes it clearer, to me, it makes it muddier, and I don't think it's as healthy as the one we passed originally.
I do that also.
I think that I'm in agreement, the reemergence of the Graham language after the discussion, I think, is a problem, just generally speaking, and I think that doing so, and not allowing the public to have an opportunity to see what was being planned to go forward, to the monitor, was a misstep, and one that I do feel is so, although I think that there was a little bit of pushback at our last board meeting, I'll say it again, I think we are the voice and the advocate for the community for this very reason. I think that they, you all had a right to know what was going on, and so, here we are.
Please.
In response to Board Member Fine, in listening to what Commander Middleton just told us about why Graham found its way back into 252, and the rest of the suite, for that matter, it was because the officers wanted it, that was his direct quote verbatim. The problem that I have is that the community does not want it, the monitor also does not want it. I would like to review what happened here, I guess it's going to be the third brief review of what happened. So, the way 352, the policy on policies is written, is that a policy should go to the P P R B, when it comes out of the P P R B, it is supposed to then come to the P O B. After the P O B, it's been presented to the P O B, it will thereafter move to the monitor, and then to the chief. The reason why we're having this really significant issue is because this policy on policy that we so painstakingly developed over several months was not followed here. So what ended up happening was the policy went to, came to us, the public made a comment on the policy as it existed at that time, then it went to the P P R B, and on 7/10, we see a draft that comes out of the P P R B that is materially changed to incorporate the Graham standard. In response to Mr. Schmeele, I was not made aware of this draft. I personally, speaking for myself, but being a member of the board, was not aware of that, those language changes until our last full board meeting. And so, so this meeting here is, in essence, a response to that, because what we're supposed to have, when we get to the, when a policy gets to the P O B, is a near-final draft. That way, and public comment is supposed to occur at that time. And so, the opposite is what happened here with our most, you know, arguably, easily arguably, our most important set of policies, our use of force policies. And the issue that I had with that is that I think it rendered stakeholder, amici, community input strategies for addressing the substance of the use of force policies really ineffective, because the forum was held before the policy was completed. And so, I think that, you know, in this instance, we sort of fudged the policy, or we fudged the process, and we got a really horrible result. And I think public input was cut off at the knees, because the policy came out of the P P R B after our P O B meeting with material changes related to Graham. And I think that this meeting is an excellent demonstration that had those Graham, had all of those Graham paragraphs been in the policy that we saw, that many amici stakeholders, members of the public, would have had something to say about that language. However, there was really no good opportunity to do so. So we've had six parties here, and even survivors of a lethal use of force incident, to come and speak against these language changes. So I think that really demonstrates that these language changes are not, they're no small thing, and I think arguments saying that, you know, we have, the lesser standard is still in there, even though Graham has now been incorporated, really fall flat. I also think, you know, we shouldn't have, we shouldn't have deviated from the, what 352 says we should do to work a policy through. Because I think that, you know, what may have happened here is that we saw, at our full board meeting, where we saw 252 come to us, the A P O A was here, and the A P O A had some time in the hours before our meeting, submitted comments in writing to us that said that they wanted Graham to be in this policy. However, at that board meeting, they, even though they had representatives present, in fact, Mr. Sean Willoughby was here at that meeting, he did not venture up to the podium to say, by the way, we're advocating for Graham to be in this policy. So really, I believe that that was a very underhanded strategy, and it was very effective, because then they got to go to the P P R B and say, hey, please put Graham in, and then look at what we end up with. So, so on Graham, particularly to speak to the Graham standard, it is a lesser standard for the use of force than we are required to contemplate in this policy. The Graham standard imports what are, you know, essentially subjective considerations regarding an officer's perceptions at the time of a use of force. regarding an officer's perceptions at the time of a use-of-force incident. That is not, you know, that can arguably run counter to a definition of objectivity. It's kind of, you know, the way that, the way that opinion is written is very tricky. I believe having Graham in the policy is misguided. It moves in the opposite direction of the mandates of the CASA, as well as our life-saving and integrity-preserving reform efforts. The Graham standard contains twenty-twenty hindsight language. And, you know, in effect, it's been used, we've seen it case after case after case, where the, the result is, in twenty-twenty hindsight, lethal force was not necessary, because a person was not posing an actual threat. But when we have this in our policy, it moves us away from requiring the type of circumspection that one must engage in to make an accurate analysis of whether or not we have an actual threat present, and whether use of force is necessary. And, you know, we have some, several people have made comments here today that I really agree with, primarily that Graham is for the courtroom. It's an analysis provided by the court ultimately to determine whether or not liability attaches. It is, it analyzes whether a use of force passes a threshold of reasonableness, but whether, but it does not seek to understand what the minimal amount of force required in any developing situation may be. That's what this policy is supposed to do. And so Graham is really a ceiling for force, and this policy is supposed to be about the minimum, which is, how do we get as far away from that ceiling possible? Those are two different things, eking past constitutional muster, and what is minimum, minimally required, two different things. And so Graham is not to be used prospectively, it's not for policy. The language and rationale of Graham contradicts the lesser standard we seek to use for this policy. And again, I would agree with the set of comments that said, this is, these additions are very confusing, and they're going to be hard to train to. Because what you have is, you have first, a minimum standard, and then you have Graham language right after, and these two, these are different standards. How are you going to really train to a policy that has two different standards? I don't, I think that that's confusing, and it's illogical, and it's inconsistent with the objectives of the community and the consent decree. And so I personally am, again, asking that A P D abandon these Graham paragraphs in every policy in the use-of-force suite.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's also two, two more things that I noticed that were different about the OPA version versus the P P R B version. Under use-of-force prohibitions, as the OPA version had as its last bullet point, "The use of unreasonable force will subject officers to discipline as well as to possible criminal prosecution and/or civil liability," that is not present in the P P R B version. In addition, this also, deadly force, number nine on deadly force at OPA, was "The use of force against any individual whose health, age, condition, or circumstance make it likely that death or serious bodily injury will result," is also not in P P R B's version. And there is one more on the P P R B version, deadly force, here it is. Item number three, it says intent, let's see this one, where it says deadly force. Intention, this is what it says in the OPA one, "Intentional strikes with any hard object, such as a baton, flashlight, radio, weapon, stock handle, or improvised weapon, to the head, neck, throat, sternum, groin, or kidneys." It is changed in, in this P P R B version to exclude sternum, groin, or kidneys. It might be a typographical error, but it's different. Those two things are different. So it's not just Graham, there's a couple of other things that are different.
Okay.
Chair Waits, I just wanted to, the first one, I think you mentioned, "The unreasonable use of force will subject officers to discipline as well as to possible criminal prosecution and/or civil liability." It was actually moved up. It's on the first page of the document approved by the Policy Procedure Review Board on July the tenth, twenty eighteen. So it's actually been moved up.
The first page of what?
Of the policy.
Under policy?
The first page of the document, under policy, it's down, the paragraph that starts, "Officers derive their authority." The second sentence states, "The unreasonable use of force." So it was actually moved up, rather, it wasn't omitted.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any other comment?
Chair Waits, can I say one last thing? I also really wanted to thank everyone for being here. Like I was saying, I think this meeting demonstrates that, you know, had the policy on policy been followed for this particular policy, we would have seen a lot of community input on the Graham language. I think there is no better testimony to the truth of that statement than having this many people here after five P M. on a Friday to do just that.
Okay, any other comment?
And just to follow up with that, that we have new faces in our audience. That argument was made to me several times over the course of the last week, that anybody who wanted to be a part of this process has already been a part of the process, and that's just not the case. So for those of you who are new faces, thank you for being here.
And we like the old faces, too.
We do.
Okay. I'm gonna reserve my comments until another time. I think my members have eloquently stated how the board feels about implementing Graham into this policy. And I think we still have some questions that needs to be answered, and I think we'll direct those questions to the right per, person or, or people. Do you have a question, Dr. Harness? Do you have a comment?
Chair Waits, just that the board need not vote on any of these recommendations this evening. What will happen is the entire hearing and the entire body of comments will be provided directly to the monitor for his consideration.
Okay. And, and we weren't gonna take a vote, so.
I, I would like, since Dr. Cass and Mr. Harness, Director Harness, were both mentioned in the remarks as participating in P P R B and not, and voting, it was implied that they voted in favor of Connor, I'd like to know if you, if that's true, and if it's true, did you, what were your thoughts?
Did you turn your mic off?
I did not.
Yes, I, I did vote, and I, and I think this is in favor, and I think that my reasons for doing so were to move this process along, with the idea that other, you know, that it was going to be reviewed periodically. I think that I should have been more aware of the significance of the return of the Graham language, and I, for that, I, I would, if I were to do it over again, I would, would put more resistance up. But I think that the, the important thing here is that it be moved to a point in the process where it can get a public airing, and I think that's what we've succeeded in doing here. And I think it, you know, I don't wanna just, you know, create controversy out of nothing. On the other hand, I think there was an inherent controversy in, in this, but I think it needed to be publicly aired. And it certainly has engaged the community, and I think that's, and that's a good thing. I don't think we've seen the last of it, but I think it does define the, the lines of the fight, essentially. And it's a, it's, it is a fight between wanting to keep, you know, it's essentially the union's position that they want to keep that language in there for their reasons, primarily that it's been there a long time and it ought to stay there. It's the standard. I believe it's the monitor's position, and it's the DOJ's position, that this language should be removed. And so I think we now know, and it's, and from what I can tell of the community, the community weighs in on the, on the side of removing this language, and, and dealing with the reasons, the underlying reasons, why the DOJ came here. So I, I'm happy that this conversation's gotten to this point, and I, I'll leave it at that.
Chair Waits, Board Member Fine, I did vote to pass the policy, and, because I think that the officers will be able to differentiate. They will be trained on the minimum use of force, that will be the standard. I believed that the paragraph states that officers are going to be held to Graham, and Graham is there, and it's, it is in an officer's mind, and it, and it is, but the paragraph also states that they're going to be held higher to the stricter policy, and the stricter standard. So I was comfortable with the language. I understand how some see that it could be confusing, but I believe that the officers are going to be trained to the matrix of the minimum use of force, and simply stating that, intermingling Graham, and having it stated as a threshold, while realizing that the department is going to hold them to a higher threshold. I didn't, I was comfortable with it.
Thank you, both. Appreciate it.
Any other comment or questions before I move to close? Okay. Can I get a motion to close?
I move that we adjourn that topic item on our agenda.
That's all we have on the agenda, isn't it?
You have an outdated agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There is. So I guess I move that we discuss, end the discussion, close the discussion, the P O B on the use of force two fifty-two.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay. Am I in favor?
Aye.
And the, all right. What was that, I think, Garcia?
Yes.
Okay. On the agenda, we have a review of Lieutenant Garcia's investigation. Is, Mr. Harness, do we have an update on that?
Yes, Chair Waits. This week, counsel from your, your counsel had conversations with the city attorney's office, and Attorney Aguilar reached out to me, I believe it was on Wednesday, and explained the miscommunication and the misperception of, of how that file was to be treated, and assured me that the file will be provided for review, so.
What is the miscommunication, may I ask? Sorry.
Chair Waits, Board Member Fine, that this was treated like a personnel matter with not involving A P D. Not that, not that the, not that the attorney wasn't aware that it involved A P D, but that it was to be treated as a personal matter with an outside investigation, as they do for Department of Sanitation or any other city employee, and that there wasn't other special considerations to be involved. And so that, that was cleared up, and we will, we will be getting the file.
Okay. Any other comment?
You agree? Member Waits, yeah, or Chair Waits and Board, yes, that's, that is correct. Typically, for employment matters, our office handles a particular third-party company to conduct certain investigations, which are work product, and so we did not, had not received a formal written request on this. I think there was some, some communications and requests, verbal requests for the file, and there was just a plain miscommunication. Obviously, this, this particular investigation was conducted by this company in lieu of the Internal Affairs conducting internally because of the conflict, and they could not handle that. So that was the, what I meant earlier by saying it was a simple miscommunication, and I, I discussed that with Director Harness and cleared that up.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Was that?
That's great. Thank you. That's perfect.
So I have one, so what, what, what happens next in this case, now that we have this?
Chair Waits, Board Member Cass, I will get the file, and I will review it, and I will, I'll review it for contents that perhaps are only, I am only able to review, and then if you want me to, how, if you want me to report out on it, or if you want me to redact it for your review, that's for you to let me know how you would like to do it.
Thank you.
We can treat it, we can treat it as we have serious use-of-force cases, where I could simply report out on it to the board.
Do you want to go through committee on that?
Yeah, we can, we can go through our committee on it.
Okay.
We have on our agenda the update on Director Harness's contract. I think we have to talk about that, and before we make that public, so we'll do that at another time.
Well, there is some, I think there are some things that we can update on. We can say that Monday evening of this week, City Council had on their agenda the renewal of Director Harness's contract, and that was deferred ninety days. And so we are working with City Council on that. But I do believe that the, the deferral of the, of the renewal of Ed's contract does highlight some things that we, as a board, need to discuss, and we don't have an opportunity to do so outside of board meetings. But since they are personnel-related issues, I would suggest that, even though it's not on our agenda, I believe we can do a member-by-member vote, and Director Harness, you might be able to guide us further in that, in order to add that and be able to go into a closed So the, the closed discussion and possible action language is typically on our agenda. This is limited personnel matters under, pursuant to New Mexico statute from nineteen seventy-eight, sections ten dash fifteen dash one H two. Because we have these personnel issues, I, I would recommend, we can push it off to our next board meeting, but I would recommend and move that we take a member-by-member vote to move into a closed session now. Do you second?
We need a motion.
I, I just made that motion.
I'm seconding your motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I think we need to have that member-by-member vote to actually do that.
Yep, it's a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Chelsea.
Just say yes.
Just say yes.
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 Now.
And then we'll come back after that and close the meeting.
All right, we'll come back and adjourn the meeting after we have this closed session. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you very much, everyone.